Last regular city council meeting of the year, which will shortly become our special meeting to do our reorganization. We are beginning the meeting at 7:11. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bowles, here. Councilmember Beer, here. Councilmember Beckmeyer, present. Mayor Protem Vaterlas, here. Mayor Big Stick, present.
City Clerk, do people still need to put parking pass in their dashboard this time of year?
Yes, parking is being enforced, and if you're in the audience and have parked in the lot in front of the council chambers, please grab a paper pass at the bottom of the stairs and put that on your dashboard.
And are there meeting notes to be read?
Tonight's meeting is being held in person with alternative ways to view and participate in the meeting via Zoom. The Zoom link is provided in the agenda. You can also dial in with the webinar ID and in the agenda, press star nine to raise your hand if you're dialing in, press star six to unmute once called upon by the last four digits of your phone number. The meeting also can be viewed on Comcast Channel 26 or via livestream at www.cityofpacifica.org/livestream.
Thank you very much. The City of Pacifica acknowledges that we occupy the unceded ancestral homeland of the Ramaitush Aloni peoples who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. We honor the Ramaitush Aloni peoples for their enduring commitment to Mother Earth. As the indigenous protectors of this land and in accordance with their traditions, the Ramaitush Aloni have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as the caretakers of this place, as well as for all peoples who reside in their traditional territory. We affirm their sovereign rights as first peoples and wish to pay our respects to the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Ramaitush Aloni peoples. Also going to take the liberty of saying that the City of Pacifica welcomes all people regardless of race, gender, identity, ethnicity, religion, political views, and other backgrounds. And the city council has made it a priority to foster a diverse and inclusive environment in which all people may express themselves freely and peaceably. The city council stands united against hate and announces all forms of hate, racism, intolerance, and violence. The purpose of the city council meetings is to conduct the important business of the city in an efficient manner in accordance with the city council rules and code of ethics. The city recognizes that the city council meetings are a limited public forum and that residents have constitutional free speech rights, and the city welcomes input on agenda items consistent with the council rules and other applicable laws. I will now lead us in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first order of business, a proclamation honoring Susan Thaxton. Proclamation of the City of Pacifica in recognition of Susan Thaxton's retirement in 2023. Congratulations and best wishes. Whereas Susan Thaxton is retiring from a distinguished public service career with the Pacifica Public Works Department, serving most recently as laboratory supervisor for the wastewater division. And whereas Susan Thaxton has served an amazing 39 years with the Public Works Department. She was hired as a temporary part-time laboratory technician on March 1, 1984, what was originally only to be a two-month assignment, now might be the longest temporary assignment in Pacifica history. And whereas Susan Thaxton was certified as a grade-one laboratory analyst and became a permanent employee on July 24, 1987, she continued to work toward getting higher certifications and eventually achieved a grade-four certification. Susan was promoted to laboratory supervisor on June 1, 2002. And whereas Susan Thaxton helped to train numerous laboratory personnel throughout the years, and she also looked for new ways to improve laboratory testing and reporting by using new technologies. And whereas Susan Thaxton was instrumental in setting up the new laboratory at Calera Creek Water Recycling Plant in early 2000, when the plant first went online. And whereas Susan Thaxton developed many standard operating procedures and also implemented the current WIIMS Information Electronic Reporting System to bring Calera Creek Water Recycling Plant into the 21st century. And whereas in recent years, Susan Thaxton led the effort towards the State Environmental Laboratory Accreditation Program, or ELAP, plant laboratory recertification process. And whereas Susan Thaxton takes great pride in her work and has dedicated her career to the people and the communities in Pacifica, she worked tirelessly to improve the environment and bring awareness to the water and wastewater industry. Her legacy will lie not only in her accomplishments, but also in the lasting friendships she has cultivated within the team. Now, therefore, I, Tiger Jazz Twirls, Big Stick, on behalf of the city council of the City of Pacifica and all its citizens, do hereby extend our grateful thanks and appreciation to Susan Thaxton for 39 years of dedicated and distinguished service to the City of Pacifica and wish her all the best in her future endeavors done this 11th of December 2023. Now, we are going to take turns telling you how much we love you. Wait a minute, come back, come back. Don't come in. Come on back.
Oh, she's giving hugs.
You can sit there, too, if you'd like, but we're going to still take turns telling you exactly how much we love you. I'll be the last one to say a few words, and then if we could get a picture with you at the end, that would be charming. With that being said, council, who would like to go first?
How many years?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine. Thirty-nine years, you've served our city. I mean, how can we thank you? There's no way that anyone could thank you enough for serving our city for that long. I think that's so beautiful, and I don't think people understand, like, all the intricacy, like, all the work that goes on and what your job was, right? Thank you so much for everything you've done for so very long.
I got to tour the sewage treatment plant a couple of years ago, and I think I walked into your lab, and I had no idea, we had a lab, or why we had a lab. And it was really just amazing to learn the importance of checking our microbes and all that you learn from that, to make sure, you know, our city stays healthy and what we're processing and putting out isn't passing on other diseases to other places. It's such an important role, and yet you're hidden away in this little room in the sewage treatment plant, which people don't see. And I just really want to thank you for your years of service to us and wish you well in a well-deserved retirement. Thank you, Susan.
Mayor Protem.
I've met you before, but we don't really interact, and I am so amazed at 39 years. The longevity that people have that work here is amazing to me. We have people who aren't even that old, so it's just amazing, and thank you so much for everything.
Well, like Councilmember Bowles, I was so thrilled when I first toured the wastewater treatment plant. I was with Councilmember Beer, and we had so much fun, and we were just like, look at all the science, there's so much science, this is so great, because I work in the schools in Pacifica, and I'm like, we got to get our students in here and see what goes on. And when I think about your time, from all the time you were here and working in this site, presumably, and then moving and having that whole lab and brand-new facility, it must have been kind of cool. And we really appreciate you helping to guide our process and keep us in compliance, and your work is very critically important, so thank you for all your years of service to us.
So first of all, I have the general speech I give about how the folks who are working in wastewater are the unsung heroes who we very rarely mention, because it's when things are going well, we don't see you, and so we don't have that opportunity viscerally in front of our face. So on that level, thank you. More than that, you've been working on making sure that our environment is safe. That's the part of wastewater that you work in, is making sure that when that water comes out on the other end, it's safe for the environment. So you're not just working for our community, you're working for the larger community. But more than that, I have the good fortune of having a more personal relationship with you from my perspective, because I serve you on a very regular basis at the grocery store. And so this will be the last special presentation I'll be giving for at least a little while, and I'm so happy that you are the one in front of me, because I am so happy to be able to tell people that I get to see on a regular basis. Every time, over the course of like 17 years, I've asked you to donate, the answer is always yes, without fail. You go to Safeway, I'm there, haranguing you about the $10 bag of food. It doesn't matter how many times in a week she is there, she always says yes to that and everything else that... So I know you not just to be somebody who technically is taking good care of us, our environment, I also know you to be intrinsically a good human being, and so it's my honor to offer this proclamation, and congratulations, and thank you so much for all the work you've done in Pacifica. So before you go, I believe Public Works Director Lisa Peterson might wish to also offer a word or two, and I see Assistant Director Louis Sun coming up as well.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, and City Council members. Louis Sun, Deputy Director of Public Works, Wastewater. Director Peterson and I would like to present a special token of thanks from the City of Pacifica to Susan Thaxton for 39 years of service. Just as we heard earlier, she has so many accomplishments in this 39 years, and one of the things, if I may point out, is in the laboratory, that's the most important part of our operation. It's like the brains of our operation, and if we didn't have the lab, we would be flying blind, so to speak. So every single operational decision is coming out of the lab, so that's a very important thing, and it's a great accomplishment for Susan to serve the city diligently and faithfully for 39 years. And we're thankful for her, and we are very blessed to have her serving us and helping us throughout the years. And with this, I'd like to give Director Peterson a chance to speak as well.
Thank you, yes. Susan has been amazing for operation, as mentioned, lab manager, such an important role, a very critical role for us to be able to even operate. We couldn't even operate unless Susan was doing an excellent job, and we've continued to operate, and so it just, you know, the proof is in the pudding, so to speak. She's done an amazing job, 39 years, congratulations. And with that, Louis will give you your award.
Thank you. It's really nice.
Thank you. Thank you so much for this honor, and I hope my head doesn't explode. Anyway, it's been a pleasure working all these years, the longest temporary job in history. And, you know, one of the things that keeps me going is we've had a good team, a lot of teamwork, and certainly with the Calera Creek plant, I mean, everybody, you know, it took a team to get it going, and if anybody ever questions, well, what was all that money spent for? And, you know, the data shows that we are producing much better quality of water, which is better for public health and the environment, so, thank you.
If you'd be so kind as to take a picture with us before you run off, we'd be grateful. Do any council members wish to pull any items off of consent? And Gladys, if you want to come up and take a picture, too, please do. If not, we can open public comments on items on consent. I don't have any cards in front of me if anyone was wishing to speak on a consent item.
We have no raised hands.
Okay, in that case, I'll close public comment on consent and bring it back to council for discussion, questions, or a motion.
I move that we approve items one through nine on the consent calendar.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
And with the motion for consent made by Mayor Protem Vaterlas, seconded by Councilmember Beer, that vote passes unanimously.
That brings us to public comments on items not on the posted agenda. This portion of the agenda is available for the public to address the city council on any issue that is not on the agenda. Any person wishing to address the council shall be recognized by the mayor during this time, provide, however, that only items not on the agenda for the meeting may be addressed. Comments on non-agendized items must address matters within the subject-matter jurisdiction of the city. If comments do not address matters within the subject-matter jurisdiction of the city, the city will provide you with an initial warning to stay within the subject-matter jurisdiction of the city. If the warning is not followed, the mayor will direct the city clerk to cut off the microphone. Council members shall not engage in to debate with speakers under public comments on items not on the posted agenda. For example, if you ask us a question at the podium, we're not going to immediately answer it. Sometimes after public comment, we might make a clarifying statement or something of that sort, but there's no back and forth. A maximum of three minutes will be allowed for any speaker. I don't have any cards in front of me at present. I do see one hand raised on the Zoom. Delia, if you'd be so kind as to unmute, state your name for the record, and I'll let you know when you have one minute remaining.
Is it time to start?
Please do.
Yes, hello, everyone. My name is Delia McGrath, and I want to speak about the winter solstice, the longest night of
speaker. I don't have any cards in front of me at present. I do see one hand raised on the Zoom. Delia, if you'd be so kind as to unmute, state your name for the record, and I'll let you know when you have one minute remaining.
Is it time to start?
Please do.
Yes. Hello, everyone. My name is Delia McGrath, and I want to speak about the winter solstice, the longest night of the year, when the sun stands still. Ancient peoples everywhere actually feared that the sun might be gone forever. So great rejoicement occurred when the daylight gradually increased. This year, the winter solstice was beyond Thursday, December 21. Certainly, our world is in deep darkness as we daily hear and see the Palestinian people in Gaza being bombed and having no safe place to go. Pacifica Peace People, before this council several weeks ago, stood and proclaimed the People's Resolution, calling for an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza. And this year, on the winter solstice, that is Thursday, December 21, Pacifica Peace People will be holding a peace vigil on the winter solstice. We invite you to share our yearning for peace, bring light into darkness. So join us on Thursday, 12/21/23, from 4:30 to 5:30 p.m., South Rockaway Beach. And we're going to walk up over the zigzag trail up to the top there with lighted candles, and then come back down and speak of peace. And we hope that everyone has peace and love in their hearts at this time of year, and particularly remembering our sisters and brothers in Gaza and elsewhere where there is conflict and killing. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands on the Zoom. I don't see anyone filling out a card or coming up, so I will close public comment at this point and bring it to council for council communications. Who would like to go first? Mayor Protam.
I'm going to just read these and be quit, because we need to move on, right? And I did miss the last meeting, because I was ill, but I did read aloud to the kids at Sunset Ridge, and that was very really fun. Council of Cities in San Bruno, I went to the Democrats. I did a lot of holiday things for the city, the elf market, the Historical Society had a party at the castle. That's always fun. My favorite thing of all, the tree lighting in Rockaway, which was a huge success. It didn't rain, thank goodness. We had the special council meeting that everyone attended, the Sanchez Art Winter Fair, the Channel 26 Auction. And then the last thing I did was the menorah lighting, which is new to Pacifica and will continue to be a tradition. Thank you.
Thank you. Sue Beckmeyer.
Thank you. There. Well, I attended a number of the same events, but not all of them. In addition to the tree lighting, well, the building lighting and the elf market and the tree lighting in Rockaway, I was able to go to the Historical Society Holiday. You were there? Did you mention that one?
Yeah.
I wasn't listening, sorry. That was fantastic, too. I mean, the Maza Castle. What are you going to do? And I also went to the menorah lighting. That was fantastic. Yeah, it was really great. And I had some news that I'll share with my council members and with the public, received a letter by email from CalCities, which is the League of Cities, and I have been appointed as the Chair for the Coastal Cities Group for the coming year.
Which is the whole state, the whole state.
It's a statewide position, yeah. Thank you for mentioning that. Thanks.
I won't repeat a lot of the ones that we, I think a lot of us were at a lot of these holiday events. Yeah, and the, the other meeting Mayor Protam mentioned was on our local coastal plan update, a dinner meeting that was really well-attended. I'm really excited about that. There were about 200 people and I think really good conversations around the dinner table. A lot of questions and follow-up will come in the new year about those issues. I also met with Mary and the Pacifica Resource Center, again, about their space needs. And the county grant information is out now as of the beginning of January that we're looking into. Marge Davis, who's the board chair, is, is doing all that research for us over the holidays. I got to meet with Spindrift with Tara Schiff, who's back here. I saw her come in, our new Economic Development Director, and Alyssa Barano, just about their programs and desire for growth and staying in our community. And it's super exciting. It's just a wonderful organization that teaches musical theater and, and all the associated arts to, to our children. I had a meeting with the, the San Francisco Airport Roundtable. There's a separate technical working group that works to try to find small improvements. And we approved some changes that mostly affect the, the cities near the airport about ground-based noise, which is something that they haven't really studied very much before, airplane movement actually on the ground, and some of the engines and so forth. But what's really exciting for Pacifica is, and I'm really hopeful at our meeting on February 7, we're also going to be talking about expanding the, the Night Hush program. And just to explain that, so those certain runways that fly over Pacifica between the hours right now of 1:00 and 5:00 a.m., the flights that are heading south, instead of flying directly over the north end of Pacifica, they're, they're trying to route them up and over the Golden Gate Bridge instead. And I was always upset that that was only such a short time period, from 1:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. Sue and I get woken up a lot. But we're, they're actually looking at expanding those times. So that was an introductory program, and so that's something that may help a lot of our residents. So stay tuned for that. Tiger and I also got to go to the Labor Holiday Party in Millbrae, which was just a fun event. No formal agenda, just hanging out with our partners there. And then I also got invited to the AAUW Holiday Lunch, the American Association of University Women at the Sharp Park Golf Course. And what I learned is really exciting about one of their programs is to send three eighth-grade girls to a tech camp in the spring. And so they're, they're actively fundraising for that right now. The PCT Auction was fun. I got to answer some phones for a little while with the pirate's sub manner.
Arr.
And I, I won't go on about this, but I, I got, we had a really fun day at the San Mateo County Leadership Training. It's a 10-month program that I'm participating in. And we played a game on Friday. It was a very stressful game called Simsock. It was simulating a society. This was started at a program at a university. We all got an envelope. We got assigned to one of four groups. And we, the goal was to, it's kind of like running a city or a region, you know, have enough businesses, jobs, you have politicians, media, judges, so forth, to try to keep everyone alive in the society, make enough money so that people could survive over the course of the day. And just so many things that you learned. I started off being unemployed, which was quite stressful, and ended up getting hired to be one of the judges. And just, and just briefly, one of the learning points, one of the groups, the red group, had no jobs and no resources. And this was intentional. So, and we couldn't just travel to them. You had to, there were special arrangements. But the goal was to get everyone to survive and thrive, right? So kind of figuring that out. And as a judge, trying to make laws for people that you didn't know and didn't get to visit and how you enforce them. But what the, the learning for me was that we did, we did go visit them and ask what they needed and decided we needed to try to pass some laws to, to, for some taxes to try to help the people who were still, you know, struggling to survive. But what they really wanted was not just a handout to survive. They wanted to, you know, build businesses and jobs and actually contribute to society. And so we told them what we were doing. But at the end, when we were, when we were coming back, they were, they were very critical. And those judges never did anything. It's like, yes, we did. We passed those laws. We collected some taxes. But they never knew. And for me, what the, the, the takeaway from all this was just the importance of communication. You go in with the best of intentions. You need to listen to, to learn what they really need. But two, you need to communicate along the way what you're doing and, and the steps that you're doing, because otherwise resentment and fear build. Anyway, it was, the best part was actually hearing everyone's, you know, experience, experiences and takeaways at the end. I'm happy to talk more about, if anybody wants to at the end. And that's all. Yeah, all the Christmas events were really fun. And, thanks.
Thank you. Council Member Beer.
Good evening, everybody. I want to thank Delia McGrath from the Pacifica Peace People for always bringing us back to where we're supposed to be, and thinking about peace, and for uplifting the people of Gaza. And I just can't stop praying for all the innocent people in that region, the whole entire region. And I just wish that it would stop. And so thank you, Delia, for always bringing us back to where we're supposed to be. She's awesome. All right. So I went to a lot of different things, but I just want to report on a couple of them. There's an age-friendly survey out. If you could go to Pacifica Senior Services website, you could, there's, there's a link you can click. So if you want to give some information about age-friendly cities, please go there and take their survey. Pacific Coast Television also has a survey on their website. People are collecting a lot of information right now, so please feel free to fill out all those surveys. That would be great. I got to be the elf, which felt kind of weird to say that after, after talking about the horrors of what's going on in, in our, in our world. And so I almost wasn't going to talk about being the elf, because that's, my heart isn't there. But I think I was kind of born to be an elf. And so I, I've been doing it a lot.
And she's a great elf.
We're at the tree lighting at Pacific Coast Television's telethon. We're going to be doing it for the teacher housing in Jefferson Union High School District. Mike and I will be up there on the 22nd. So, yeah, there's that. There's the elf. I want to thank everybody for coming out to the meeting, the community meeting that we had about the local coastal land use plan. Wow, there were so many folks out there, and the conversations were intense and important. And I'm really happy that we had it. And I, and I think that it went just how it was supposed to go. And hopefully, we can get more information out to our communities so we can clear some things up. I think people were a little confused with the information, and that's okay, because we have an opportunity now to get that information to you. I went to the Coast Pride Board meeting. We're starting to plan for our June Pride events. I went to the Heart Board meeting, which is the Housing Endowment and...
Regional Trust.
Thank you, Regional Trust. That's why we have friends here. I want to thank Cindy Abbott from the Sanchez Art Center for her, the winter fair that they had, which was so much fun, but also for a project that we're doing in the community through the Pacifica Collaborative, which is art for a peaceful and just community. And so I just want you to know that there's a lot of sectors in our community that are participating in these art projects. And as they, as we kick it off and get things moving, I will bring you more information. So you can go to the website and see all of the different projects that are happening. There are already so many. And so I'm really proud of the people at the Pacifica Collaborative, which the Pacifica Peace People are part of, because we're coming together to promote kindness. PRC, Pacifica Resource Center, still is willing to accept gift cards. So please, if you have gift cards or anything that you can think of, please donate them to the Pacifica Resource Center. They're taking care of our families. They took care of mine when I was raising my single, my daughter as a single parent. And there's many people out there that are being helped by the Pacifica Resource Center. So please give, continue to give. And then I just want to shout out really quickly to our, our colleague in South San Francisco, James Coleman. He is the youngest mayor in San Mateo County. Super proud of him.
If I might, Mayor.
Please do.
Council Member Beer.
Yes.
Regarding the elf.
Yes.
I want to say this. Every time I'm around you, when you are the elf, you are bringing joy. So while I agree that there is turmoil and there's a lot to be distressed about, you're bringing some balance to the world with that action. I know it's hard to do when you're like, ugh, but thank you for that.
Thank you so much.
Well, I'll start with happy holidays, everyone. And may everyone experience a happy New Year, however you get there. Thank you, as always, to Jack Brigette, the Director, the President of the Water District Board for being here. And may your health improve. And likewise, Ukraine, Israel, and Gaza are persistently in my mind as places where I wish they were not in a perpetual state of experiencing terror. And so may joy prevail in all of these places and many others worldwide that we are not mentioning. As far as my activities go, there was a Peninsula Clean Energy Surplus Funds Committee meeting. I think we're just about ready to bring proposals to the entire board on what to do with the surplus cash on hand, so as to help people to electrify, et cetera. So more to come on that in the coming year. I also attended the San Mateo Labor Council Lunch, the Polar Palooza, as we lit up the community center, the holiday party at Sam's Castle, the tree lighting at Rockaway. Sue, thank you for eggnog. It was delicious.
Thanks.
I attended the San Mateo, the City of San Mateo reorganization, and I'm happy to report that our, their new mayor is Lisa Diaz Nash, without any ado. And it was a lovely evening. We had the LCLUP meeting, which I'll speak more on later. And tomorrow, I think I'll be attending the reorganization in Millbrae, where I also expect smooth sailing. These are the jurisdictions where it wasn't as smooth last year, but I'm confident this year will be far smoother. I attended the Jefferson Union High School District Immigration, no, Immigrant Resources Night. That was a cool event, and I strongly recommend to city staff that we're tabling there next year. And for that matter, to PRC, I see Director Anita Reese in the audience. I think it would be a, a good opportunity for PRC also, and was struck by how many resources there are countywide and in our adjoining jurisdictions to help immigrant families. Attended the PCT Telethon the other night with all of the rest of council, and got to do some phone banking with Mayor Protam. And it was a really good time. And then on Sunday, there was the Hanukkah at the community center, which was put on by, I believe, Chabad of Daly City. There were other rabbis in attendance also. And Moisha Heinz of the Coastside Jewish Community expressed interest that perhaps we'll have something that maybe looks more like a jointly-held Hanukkah celebration, should we wish to persist in this tradition, which I think would be a more-than-welcome addition. And that's what I did this week. Staff Communications, please.
Thank you, Mayor Big Stick, Mayor Protam Vaderlas, and council members. Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager, I have a few communications I'd like to provide. The first, regarding the Leadership Council of San Mateo County, which Council Member Bowles is a member of the cohort for this year. Last week, we had the opportunity to tour them around city facilities. Economic Development Manager Schiff and I toured them in the council chambers. We showed them the forthcoming community, I mean civic center from the sidewalk. We didn't go onsite. And looking at potential meeting spaces for the Leadership Council to bring the cohort to Pacifica, and leaders, it's comprised of leaders from all around the counties. to Pacifica and leaders, it's comprised of leaders from all around the county. So they do their day-long, once a month, I believe it is, meetings. And in the future, in 2024, hopefully, they'll come to Pacifica. When they do so, they tend to want to have brunch from a local restaurant. And then they may also tend to, or at least I would encourage, if they do come to Pacifica, to actually enjoy the end of the day in Pacifica, too. So look forward to that. And that was an opportunity that grew out of a meeting that I had with the mayor and their leadership about the Leadership Council. So the next communication, or actually, the next two communications I want to provide are really an end-of-year thank you and gratitude. So first, I want to talk about the storm season upcoming. And we have members from North County Fire Authority here. We have our police department representative. We have our Public Works Department here. And I just want to give an advance shout-out before any serious storms hit our city of all of the work that is normally done to prepare for the winters. A lot of special work that I know Public Works is doing to build our resiliency to storms that is not normal stuff, but that's like maintenance of pump stations and extra generators, making sure they're on hand. And a lot of work goes into these special project preparations. But just to acknowledge that this is the last council meeting of the year. We're headed into the end of December and January. And a year ago, at the end of December, was when we were hit with significant storms. So just a shout-out and a thank you to all the staff from the entire city, but particularly fire, police, and Public Works that are at the ready to help us in those situations. Similarly, I had the thought that as the last city council member, I mean, city council meeting of the year, doing a little math in my head, and I wish I had actually had the time to go and actually calculate it. So let's say there were, on average, about 25 regular city council meetings throughout the year, regular and special. And on average, on every agenda there, let's just, maybe this is a low ball, but 10 agenda items. What I want to give a shout-out to is that every agenda item has a detailed council report that is prepared, that is the vehicle for all of the information to inform the public and the council for the policy decision that the council needs to make. And the point I want to make, which I haven't emphasized before, is the preparation and the trajectory for each of those council reports can be very long. It can be a learning experience, starting with an intern in the organization, writing their very first city council report, and then reviewed by other folks in the department. Eventually, all the reports are reviewed by myself. And it's just an incredible workload that facilitates local democracy. But we tend to not think about the 250 to 300 of those reports that are written every year to inform this decision-making at our local level. So the shout-out is to all of the staff in every department that has touched and worked on those city council reports, not to mention our incredible city clerk Coffee and deputy city clerk. For facilitating those reports to get posted in a timely fashion and meet all the noticing requirements and be available. So it's a great joy to, you know, participate in that process and deliver those reports. And we're constantly working on improving the reports and making them better. And they can take a lot of work. And it's a lot of reports. And to the city council, who has to review all the reports and then make decisions. So it's just a thought that occurred to me on this last council meeting of the calendar year. So thank you.
Thank you, Kevin, and thank you, staff. And really, there aren't enough ways to say thank you. But I can start with that humble word. There's no public hearings, and there are no consideration items. That brings us to our special order of business, city council reorganization. I guess we start with my remarks. All right, then. If anyone brought pillows, now's the time to break them out. All right. Good evening, Pacifica, community, staff, colleagues. County Supervisor Ray Mueller, Katrina Rill with Congresswoman Anna Eshu's office, Anthony Yoshida with State Senator Josh Becker's office, and Elise Lester with State Assembly Member Mark Berman's office. Thank you all for being here tonight, and I wanted to make sure to recognize you all out the gate. I also, as I mentioned before, see Anita Reese with the Pacifica Resource Center and Mark Hirschman, who's the legislative guy for Peninsula Clean Energy. You give me the thumbs up, it's close enough. Staring at a state in which the work must go on, leaving this position hasn't informed language quite as attempted toward poetic as entering the position a mayor apparently did around this time last year. As I sat last night concocting words comparatively boring and straightforward, reflecting that so often it is way too easy for me to have way too many words. You're about to hear that verbose thing I penned last night in lieu of a speech, but before you do, I don't want anything I say next to overshadow the very simplicity that I am grateful that you all looked at little old me with all my affectation of eccentricity and decided to let me serve in this position for even the briefest of moments. Born of this gratitude for entrusting to me this responsibility, my sincerest prayer is that I have served you in any measure well by it. As mayor, the only official duty that particularly distinguishes me from my colleagues is the capacity to chair the meetings. In being given this task, I have done my level best to discharge that duty with a mind intent on harmonizing differing views and heightening the civility of discourse. More to come on that shortly. The other, less official, though no less distinguishing characteristic, I came to realize, was the fact of the title itself. Though odd and mysterious to my sensibilities, apparently, folks are more inclined to take your call when you hold the title of mayor. Concluding this quickly, I spent most of the year making as many calls and attending as many events as I have possibly been able to, to leverage my title into relationships that might serve our community once my title has been passed on as per tradition. In this way, this year for me, has largely been a marathon run, and here's the bittersweetness at the finish line. I get to cross to a state of being where I'll literally, once again, thank goodness, have time to clean my own house, on the one hand. On the other hand, I'll shortly miss the sacrosanct duty that managing meetings has Over the course of a year, we have discussed homelessness. We have discussed substance abuse. We have discussed coastal erosion and coastal commission and surf camps and life buoys and short-term rentals and manor over crossings and sea level rise and economic development and interagency land swaps and affordable housing and workforce housing and market-rate housing and whether or not to use the Roy Davies Trust Fund to fix parks. Look it up if you still don't know. And paying for storm drainage to alleviate flooding and wetlands and wildlife urban interfaces and the fire danger they bring and disaster preparedness, tsunamis, earthquakes, policing, trail management, committee and commission charters, augmenting clean energy, respecting native peoples and childcare and elder care and the quarry and the trees, and yes, housing elements, libraries, seawalls, potholes, and even basic city services. If not in chambers, then certainly outside of them, from community meetings to cafes to social media to check stands. If you were listening to me about a year ago, this is what they refer to in showbiz as a callback. Of course, we also spoke together about things I truly could not have fathomed foreseeing. Neo-Nazis immediately spring to mind, along with the proper way to address broken minds entering from outside of our community that would wish to pull us down to their level of abject internal torment. If I had seen it coming, I'd certainly have added it to my list. A subtle reminder, no doubt, to keep extra space on hand for when needed. Apparently, the purely unknown may always be liable to trump best and most thoroughly laid plans. When I decided many moons ago that I favored the opportunity to contribute my voice to this table, it was very strictly based upon the premise that difficult decisions would be better served by civil discourse. For example, as an alternative to many of the quickly cacophonous argument sessions I watched break out in this room. In extreme instances, it felt as though the most prominent caustic emotive sentiment was pandered to in place of policy that was duly thought through for the sake of those quarreling two sides of the same equation, that is to say, our community. Given a chance to govern, the solution to civil discourse seemed to come into focus as something having to do with kindness despite rudeness, compassion despite abrasion, and love despite liability. As near as I can tell, these are the tenets that more closely can lean us in the direction of community. All of this within the context that you have entrusted in us the opportunity to process through complex policy decisions in which sometimes our community must remain distinctly polarized, because otherwise, we up here cannot see the fullness and breadth of the ramifications present in our decision-making and attempt to honor the robust nuances of a full spectrum appropriately. In my time as mayor, I could not have felt happier in my heart to be at the helm than I was last Tuesday night. Every trepidation and critique notwithstanding of form and format, for a brief moment, the potential I considered several years ago, even very briefly, bore proof. A room filled with the full spectrum of concern over a deep, meaningful, in some ways terrifying and in all ways contentious issue, which frankly has resulted in literal screaming many times before, the local coastal land use plan. Yet we discussed it peacefully last Tuesday night as a community, not shouting, discussing. Whether or not we wind up getting the decision-making just right in the end, I probably couldn't even tell you if we do. And I have no doubt or illusion that we'll have strong-worded, impassioned, abrasive, rude rhetorical discourse on the subject before we do make our decisions. And we'll no doubt overly analyze the liabilities that may or may not undermine our quest for the perfectly balanced policy. All I'm suggesting is that as we move forward, for the civility of last Tuesday night, discussion will be richer and more likely to yield productive outcomes for every member of our community, for having engaged in an exercise of civility, for even a brief moment during a process that in other times has devolved too quickly when we forgot that we are best when we raise each other up despite our divergent worldviews. Before resigning myself to becoming the infinite broken record, I'll merely say I've long suspected that with no loss of passion, our community can engage in conversation in ways that you hear each other and therefore can better tell us your truths in ways that can hear you, in ways that we can hear you, and make better decisions for it. If I am true to my job, I want to hear your voice. If you whisper, and I am true to my job, I will have to lean closer to hear what you are trying to say. If you shout at me, I may feel a need to cover over my ears if you attain a certain pitch, at which point, as I'm feeling that and it's hurting me, I believe myself well within my right to try to prevent damage to my eardrum. Now, this, of course, is a metaphor, but not by much. Last Tuesday night, I saw a hint of a truth in my years-long suppositions. I stepped down with the wish that, as we move forward, we explore such approaches with all our hearts. The product just yields better results, no matter how much you disagree with us or each other. As I turn over the gavel, I leave you with this thought, and may it linger. Convictions of right and wrong can never build the better community. Only love can do that.
And I am going to present the mayor with a few tokens of our appreciation. The first is a photograph, and you can show everyone. That is by Danielle Durenzi, a local photographer. First gift.
It's the pier, and it's stunningly gorgeous. I'm not sure if you can catch it on film or even see it back there, but it's really quite beautiful, the pier at sunset.
That's gorgeous.
The second gift is from the city.
Your favorite thing.
And it's the mounted gavel. I was trying to find online a giant gavel. Because Tiger loves the gavel. And I'm sure that one will go home with him that's not totally mounted. It'll come out of the drawer.
How often in life do you actually have the opportunity to use one of those things?
We use it a lot.
I may never have the opportunity again.
Here is a small gift from us.
Oh, it's a $50 gift card to Cinemark because my colleagues know that I'm an avid movie goer and take in film as often as I can.
And I'm going to hold this so people can see it. But this is a lovely, wonderful plant that's going to live on forever. And that's the most important thing about it, because if you give people flowers, they just die. But these are living and show that everything is going to go on.
And the card.
And the card.
You have to read the card. You don't want to read the card. Look at what's in the card.
I see something very beautiful.
Just read the inside of the one big message. You'll see. Come on, read it.
Shall I read it aloud?
You have to now.
Tiger, "You are a kick-ass mayor who always makes sure that everyone is heard. That is a gift, and it has been a gift to me. I have felt safe and secure in every meeting you chaired. Thank you for being wonderful, intelligent, and loving. Now go buy good meat at Oceana Market." And good cuts of meat for peace on earth and good cuts of meat for Tiger. I don't know why people often think I'm vegetarian. I'm really not. And it's a goat chewing on the angel's skirt.
Buy some meat.
Meat will be bought.
Another card.
And that one has another little gift from us.
Am I reading this one also?
I don't know. Yeah, you don't need to read it out loud necessarily. But we've also loved seeing how your family has expanded this year with Sheri and Florence. And this is just a little something fun for you to do in the area with children.
Oh, cool.
So you get to take a break from these holidays and have some fun.
One day picked two of 30 San Francisco family-friendly attractions. And it says explicitly for Tiger and Florence to explore. Thank you. Thank you. Cool. Oh, my goodness.
There's not a hard attach to this one. But I guess I could say that we wish you rest and repose.
Should I continue unpacking, or is there a bottle? Oh, oh, is a very nice bottle of a fine, refined substance in here, a legal one.
And there's one more thing that you can add.
Take it out.
There's a really nice bottle of tequila in here. I don't know if y'all are familiar with Casa Azul. It is delicious, and I will savor every last drop. I might just have to open this shortly after leaving the chamber this evening.
Not yet. Not yet. Rest and repose.
And there's another thing in here. Okay. Oh, and a canteen, a very cool tie-dye California canteen. Thank you. Awesome. Is it hot and cold liquids?
Yes, it can be, because it's metals, can be whatever you want.
Wonderful. Oh, my goodness.
Fun times, huh?
Yeah, it's gonna take me... Thank you, thank you all so much. This is remarkable. Thank you.
And now council comments. Mary.
Okay.
Mary.
Okay, I'll go first. Twist my arm. Tiger.
Mary.
Tiger, remember when we served on the Rent Advisory Task Force? I know Christian remembers that.
I remember him recruiting me at Lafayette Safeway.
It was horrible. It was awful.
Was it?
I mean, I don't know.
I thought it was great.
It seems like a million years ago.
For those two sessions, I thought it was like we had a good vibe going, and we were like doing anything in a positive direction.
But that was the first time I really experienced you, and look how far we've come. I just feel like we've learned so much together along the way, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
There's so many things I appreciate about your leadership, and one of those, and I think the community really needs to understand, is that Tiger went out and made lasting, really important relationships with our regional leaders, like a lot of them. And so he was able to bring people into our city who probably didn't even know about the issues that were happening in Pacifica, and you did such a good job of that. Your relationship building was like key to the success of your mayorship, and I really appreciate that, and I hope the community does, too. There's like a grace in which you respond to people, and how you hear people, and you get every single question answered. Like, that's a gift. It's a gift, so keep that up. We also shared a super intense ad hoc committee experience.
Yes, we did.
Yes, we did. And we came out the other end, and we made some friends and, you know, moved things forward, and that was super hard. And I appreciate it, because it's in those hard times, and the struggle is where all the learning is. And I think I learned a lot from you during that time and during this whole past year, and I'm grateful.
Thank you.
You, Tiger.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go next, we're in order.
Okay.
I have learned an amazing amount from you, because I'm a very reactive person, and you're very calm, and if you could kick me under the table, you'd have kicked me like 20 times. And I appreciate that, because so many times, I really need to be kicked under the table. And...
You don't need to be kicked under the table. You need to gently be reminded to take a single breath.
A single breath.
And I think that violence toward you will help none of us, you the least.
And I didn't mean to make this about me, because it's about your leadership, and your leadership in helping the rest of us become better people. And Mary is so right. We go to an event, and he is schmoozing with every person there, and it has helped our city so much to go forward and to let others, sorry, I'm kinda repeating, but to let others know what Pacifica's about and understand what we are doing here and what we want to accomplish here. And this is probably the longest I ever talked, so I'll move on.
No, I love hearing the sound of your voice.
I think it's more of that.
We're going in order, so I'll go next. Tiger, I have to say, your focus is so inspiring, whether it's a large issue like, you know, the seawall, or something to do with Sharp Park specific plan, or a very complicated big issue. Your focus is just as keen as if, as when you are responding and focusing on an individual who has reached out to you, a neighborhood, that needed leadership, and I am very grateful to you for that. So you are responsive to me, to all of us, to the community. You're thoughtful in the way that you speak, in the way that you express and open meetings and close meetings. It's, you just bring us present to the moment, which is what you're supposed to do, and you did a great job of it. And you're very, in the same way, you're very deliberate. It's a deliberate, but thoughtful and loving kind of leadership, and thank you. I'm so grateful to you, and I've told you throughout the year, you're doing a great job. This is wonderful, you're amazing, but really, publicly, I just need to acknowledge what a great job you did. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I was probably one of those people who you put your hands up.
We're here now, that's the important thing.
We made it through the year. Yeah, so I'd been involved for council meetings for a couple of years, and I'd gotten a little bit frustrated. And so when I got elected, one of the first things I did was to invite Tiger over to my house to have a talk. So we sat out on my back deck, and you had kind of a grumpy look on your face when you started. I'm like, I don't know how this is gonna go. But this is where, you know, it's so difficult to have a relationship across the room, where you can only talk for three minutes, and, you know, you can't have a conversation. That's why that LCLUP meeting, you know, even though there's still a lot of questions unanswered, it's so important to be face-to-face, and it helps to have food and drink, you know, to open up conversation and be able to move past, you know, the potential controversy to really being able to see humanity and talk about an issue. So we had a good chat that day and started getting to know each other, and I really appreciate your time. And the next thing he did was invite me to his home for a practice session and meditation. And that was really beautiful, too, sitting in your living room on your little poof. And I definitely need help calming my mind, and I need more practice, so maybe now that you'll have more time, we can do that again.
Now that I have more time, too.
Yeah. But I really appreciate, and I never really thought about this before, being on the other end, like how you lead a meeting and how you're always looking to make sure, you look and you're making eye contact with us, like, do you need to say something? Have you, you know, gotten your questions answered? You're always checking in with us, you know, not just waiting for us to push a button and have the little light on, but there's a personal connection there. And, you know, when I first started, Michelle had told us that, you know, when a new person comes on a council, it's really a whole new council, right? And so the dynamics can be different, and how the whole council thinks together, so it takes a while to, you know, shift and so forth. And I think we've done a beautiful job together. I mean, I hear horror stories about other councils in the county, and I'm so grateful to be a part of one, our team here and our team with our city staff, where we're all working for the betterment of our city. That's where our goals and passions are, and we might not always agree, but that's where the discourse and being able to bring new ideas and perspectives and be able to talk them through so that we can choose what's best for the city. And you've done that really well. And you also are so respectful to the public. You're, you know, they call in or they speak here, you're looking them in the eye, you're thanking them, you're trying to get their questions answered if there's something that you don't know either, right? I mean, and like I was sharing before, there's, sometimes people get upset just because they don't have the information, and the more we can do to get that out and communicate, and you've done that really well. I appreciate your philosophizing. Sometimes it goes a little long, but... I'm like, how long are we supposed to have for council communication? But...
Three minutes.
But you have some really good things to say when you do. And I think what was really special in our relationship when we did get Zoom bombed, Tiger and I partnered on that, and we met several times in there, and it was about trying to find a solution where we weren't letting these awful people get, you know, win control and keeping our public from being able to comment remotely and participate. But also, I think we got a lot closer in there, too, in sharing personal stories and kind of understanding why it was so upsetting, right? And it takes some time to get to that deeper relationship, so I appreciate you taking the time for that, too. And then you were telling me about how, in different years of your council, you might give a certain amount of energy, maybe 25% your first year, 50% your second year, and 100% this year, and, oh, boy, I bet you're glad to go back down from that next year and to be able to clean your house and do some other things in life that, this job is taxing, even if you're not mayor, and to take on all that other responsibility. I mean, I don't think the community realizes that, but thank you. Not just writing the meetings, but setting the agendas and being the spokesperson at every single city event.
Thank you, and when it comes to energy management, I'm a big believer that especially when one is beginning a learning process, breathing one's way into that learning process. And so, knowing exactly how much learning I would be having to do that first year, I made sure to allow myself plenty of space to learn at whatever pace was appropriate, rather than pushing myself too hard out the gate, upping the game the second year, and knowing the responsibility this year, I had no choice but to push it to my limit. And I'm happy to report that in the coming year, probably 50%, because I need to, after deferring plenty of personal maintenance in my house, make sure that I leave energy and space and time to be able to accommodate that along with my council responsibilities. So thank you for acknowledging my thought and process. I am now to call for comments, recognizing attending dignitaries first, starting with San Mateo County Supervisor Ray Mueller. Good evening.
So Mayor Big Stick.
I don't mean to interrupt you. Sarah, did we start a ti... Oh, wait, it's a public comment, we only get the... Okay. I'm not used to putting a three-minute timeframe on a county supervisor, forgive me.
It happens.
Make it quick, Ray.
Well, I wanted to go ahead and say, Mayor Big Stick, Tiger, you are so unique. You are known for the county for being so unique. You're uniquely honest, you're uniquely sincere, you're uniquely dedicated, you're uniquely thoughtful. And what your colleagues said about your ability to forge relationships is just so true. Throughout the work that you do here in Pacifica, bringing people here to the city to understand the issues impacting the city, but the work you do on our regional committees throughout the county, being so thoughtful, so dedicated to details, and so patient in those regional meetings, in those regional meetings, sitting with, really being an exemplary example to other public officials, and the way that you're so thoughtful in approach that work, and you create the space for others to share what they're thinking. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Board of Supervisors with a certificate of appreciation to thank you for your work and congratulate you on a job well done in 2023. And I hope you don't mind if I address Vice Mayor Vatalas real quick, because I need to run to the next.
Please do.
Vice Mayor Vatalas, I'm assuming tonight that you'll be taking the gavel, and I just wanted to say to you, tonight, you show how your inner strength surpasses all the weightlifting records that you hold. It knows no bounds, and you really become a role model to others in a way that I don't think you anticipated. I just stand in awe of all that you can achieve when you're dedicated and focused on the service of others. Simply put, tonight, you inspire me. Congratulations.
Katrina Rill, Representative of Congresswoman Anna Eschew's office.
Hi, Katrina.
Hello. It's like a homecoming. Mayor Big Stick, council members, city staff, it's really wonderful to be here on behalf of Congresswoman Anna Eschew. And I am here to thank you on her behalf for your great service as mayor of Pacifica for the last year. As you know, Congresswoman Eschew is representing Pacifica for the first time in her more than 30 years in Congress, and she has loved the last year collaboration with all of you, including you, Tiger, and she's just really, really thrilled to keep working with you for the next coming year, and hopefully we can achieve some great things. She's gotten some money to Pacifica for street paving. There is a bill that has passed in the House, not yet in the Senate, that would bring almost $1 million to work on the pier, which hopefully will get through on the finish line. So on her behalf, thank you very much, and I'm bringing you a congressional certificate of recognition for your service, and she's looking forward to working with all of you next year. Thank you.
Anthony Yoshida, Representative of State Senator Josh Becker's office.
Well, I would like to start first, personally. You may not have known me for as many years, but I have known you for like my entire life, growing up in Pacifica, constantly seeing you around town and especially at Safeway. My earliest memory was you setting me straight when I was misbehaving in line. But I think we've, you know, we have a better relationship than we did when you yelled at me when I was this tall.
No, never mind better relationship. I couldn't be more proud of the man you are becoming. It is an honor that you now stand before me in this fashion.
Well, we have good role models here in Pacifica, but on behalf of Senator Josh Becker, you know, it's nice to have a mayor that fights so strongly for his town and goes out of his way to come to visit in our office in Menlo Park to make sure that Pacifica's concerns are heard, even though it's a 30, 40-minute drive away. So it's nice to see Pacifica being represented so forcefully throughout the county and through the state. So we appreciate all you do for our city, and I wish you best of luck in the next year as a council member again. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. Elise Lester, Representative of Assembly Member Mark Berman's office.
So I first started as a field representative for Assembly Member Berman in April, and you were actually the first elected official that I met with, I think, my second week on the job, and I was so incredibly nervous. I didn't know how to speak with elected officials, I didn't know where to start. I have loved Pacifica as a city all my life, but I was so unfamiliar with the issues that city council addresses, and the issues that the community was facing, and immediately upon meeting you, my nerves were calm. I know you made fun of me walking around in heels on the pier.
There's too many potholes in Pacifica for you to be walking around. There's too many potholes in Pacifica for you to be walking around here in heels. I'm just saying.
And yet, here I am. But I was so immediately at ease, and you explained things to me in a way where I didn't feel, I I guess I immediately felt like accepted, and it made me a lot less nervous to ask questions of electeds. And given that Pacifica is a new part of Assembly Member Berman's district, I just want to also reiterate what the other council members said about you bringing people unfamiliar with Pacifica into your ranks and really making them feel welcome and heard. And so on the behalf of the member, congratulations. We will miss you as mayor, and I want to wish Mayor Pro Tem Sue Vatterlaus the best of luck as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one card from Marty Anaya. And yeah.
Good evening, everybody. It feels like just less than 48 hours since I've seen all of you. But I want to say thank you all, and and thanks so much to you, Mayor, if I can say that for this one last time, because I think I think the county supervisor, Ray, said it best when he said that you give people a space, a space to to be and to to express, and that when the people feel comfortable doing that, whether it's the heady issues that we face with climate change or or so many of the economic development and all the issues that we have in town, that's something that we can't, we really can't underscore enough. And I think we've heard it here a few times. So thank you. And to Mayor Pro Tem Vatterlaus, soon to be, we think, mayor, I have a delivery for you from the auction, so I'm here in the capacity of delivery boy tonight. I'll go grab that and I'll be right back.
She can't help but buy stuff at the auction.
And thank you, by the way, for that. So I'll go grab that. I'll bring it right back over here. And thank you so very much.
Thank you, Marty. I have no further cards in front of me. Oh, I see a Chris Redfield wishing to speak.
Good evening, staff and council. I just want to thank you for an excellent tenure as our mayor. Excuse me. You have a unique, I think it's been reiterated numerous times, I think there's a theme on this, you have a unique way and ability to reach out to a community and to everyone. Pacifica has unique challenges and will always work hard to rise to those, to the occasion. You have certainly shown you were prepared to do the work. You have built important relationships with local, state, and state representatives, boards and commissions to aid in Pacifica's future. You have earned your stripes, Tiger. To paraphrase one of your best tenants, and I paraphrase it, and and you reiterated on this perfectly in your in your speech, you know, we hear you best when you're not yelling at us, and we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? I see no hands raised on the Zoom unless Emily tells me I'm mistaken. Very good. Okay. In that case, I'll close public comment. And I will open public comment to all other public comments. This will be the opportunity for public comment during the reorganization regarding the selection of mayor and/or mayor pro tem. I have no cards currently, and I don't see any hands raised on the Zoom unless Emily is inclined to correct me. So if not, then I will close public comment on the reorganization itself. And I get to make final remarks. I am rendered mostly speechless by what everyone has just been saying and the gifts surrounding me. And I'm here because I thought things could maybe, maybe my voice would be helpful in some way. And that is the hope, and it continues to be the hope. Meanwhile, my voice is absolutely worthless if it wasn't for my colleagues surrounding me, a staff who puts their heart into the work of the community every single day, day in and day out, and a community whom, however they may or may not choose to learn to communicate with us, does their best to communicate their hearts and their minds in terms of the community they would like to see. I have a beautiful partner in the front row. Thank you, Sheri, for giving me a renewed strength in a year that was a marathon. I couldn't imagine running before I took on the title. And I do not know if I could have had the strength if you had not been by my side through the entirety of the experience. And thank you also to young Florence, sitting next to you, who challenges me on a daily basis to try and figure out how to be a better human being and help her over time to learn to be the same. It is a tremendously beautiful thing to just see this room filled with human beings who put their hand and heart and every element of their beings to creating this community that we call home. And it is my honor to be able to serve in any fashion that might hopefully be helpful. And thank you all for giving me the opportunity and much more than that for actually making it happen where I do not. Rather than inviting the council to make a nomination for a new mayor, I will take liberty, finally, as I believe our former mayor did around this time last year, to make a motion that we select Sue Vatterlaus as being our mayor.
One, two, three. We second.
Let the record show that the mayor has made the motion in the entirety of council, minus Sue Vatterlaus has seconded. If it, please, the city attorney. Very good. We have the city attorney's blessing. Please vote.
The motion to a point.
So first, I want to let you know I have 20 pages written out here. You have a long time to wait, not. I I want to thank you all for being here. It's such a great day. I've been in this chair before, but I'm going to be different. I'm a much more caring, compassionate person than I probably was the first time. And I'd really like to thank the current council for having the confidence in me to be the mayor in 2024. And I was trying to think of a word to describe each one of these people up here, and there were so many that I finally came up with a word for everything, which doesn't sound like a council word, but we've said it many times tonight. And the word is love, because we're here because we love Pacifica. We love each other, and that's how we get things done here. We love our staff. We love all the people who work for Pacifica. Look, we have someone who worked here for 39 years. I mean, it's just amazing. And everybody here cares. That's the whole thing. That's why we do this, and that's why we continue to go on. You guys are the best. And speaking of the best, we have the best staff. The staff has to deal with so many things, those 250 items every every year that we go through. It's amazing. We have everyday things. We have emergencies. And then we have all the big things that we're working on. I'd like to see a lot of these big things come to fruition when I'm here. It's my last year, and that's why I ran again, so I could see these things be complete. The housing element, the local coastal program, the updates, moving the staff back to City Hall, Beach Boulevard resiliency. There are so many big projects amongst all the other things that they do on a on a daily basis. I also want to thank my family and the families of all the people who are up here, because it's an endless job that we do constantly. We go to meetings. We go here, we go there, and it's it's important to have the support of families, or we wouldn't be here. And like Tiger, I would like us to continue to work together like we have. I'd like the community to work with us because it makes it so much smoother. We don't always have to agree. We don't. The public doesn't agree sometimes, and sometimes they do, and it's really important. And if more people from the public could get involved, that would be great. If people could just get the agendas, they come to you automatically, so that people don't come up to us after 30 years and say, I never heard you were working on the general plan, which totally amazes me. Don't wait till the end till you're really concerned about something. Just be involved and and pay attention and, sorry, I had a few other little things I don't want to even say, but I would really like to thank the community, the council, the staff, and everyone for the support I've received during my journey back to good health. And it's really, sorry, it's really important to me how much support I've had. And I just want to say that I'm going to be fine, and it's thanks to everybody here. So get your mammograms, do self-exams, and thank you all for being here. Let's eat cake.
I think we have, we have one more thing.
Adam, Mayor, we do have one more task.
Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry. No cake. I'm I'm off the schedule. Okay. Sorry, we do have something else. So I would like to invite the council to make a nomination for new mayor pro tem.
If I may.
Okay.
So there's a way we generally do this, and it it generally is by the numbers. And so I ran the numbers, and the conclusion I derived at is that our next mayor pro tem would be Mary Beer. And so if you'll allow me, I would be so happy to make a motion that Mary Beer be our next mayor pro tem.
Can we discuss now?
Yes.
We can? Okay. Thank you for that, and thank you for the community for the numbers, right? I mean, that's how we we've done it. That's how we usually do it. And I know we ran in districts this past election, and so that's a little different. But I do want to thank thank my community for those numbers. It's really amazing when when you can get people to vote for you. It's so weird, like, vote for me. It's so crazy. But I would, I would, I would like to counter that offer, because I believe that it's it's time for Sue Beckmeyer to be the mayor pro tem. And the reason why I think that, there's many reasons. I think that Sue Beckmeyer is in the position right now regionally to to lead. Selfishly, I really loved it when when Sue Beckmeyer was mayor, so you know, eventually that that could happen again. I was just the mayor before you, and so I would like to to move that Sue Beckmeyer become our mayor pro tem. So now we have two motions.
The first motion doesn't, didn't, never got a second.
Oh, fabulous.
It's not a motion yet.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
You good, Michelle?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah. I'd like to support Sue for mayor pro tem also. Yeah, I think Mary was tired, and maybe she's still tired, too.
Hey, hey, hey. Oh, wait a minute, wait. I am fully ready to serve. Don't get me wrong. Yeah. There could be another chance for me to serve one day, and I I will fight for that.
I I've been, I I never knew what the procedures were before, and and actually, I'd like to talk about that a little bit because they're not, I was asking City Manager Woodhouse, and they're not really spelled out in our council handbook. And he was explaining to me, and actually, this is a perfect example, that sometimes you don't want it all spelled out because sometimes the council, you know, has a different idea about how to proceed. And and I think that I think that's a really good option for this time. Whatever, in terms of the vote, I think I think that was really appropriate when the council was voted on through the whole city, where everyone, you know, is competing for the same votes. I think it's a little, I think we might want to rethink that policy as we move forward because different districts vote differently. You know, some some districts, one and two, have more tenants and so forth that that aren't, you know, as robust voters. And so the vote count doesn't necessarily, you know, reflect the choice the way it used to. So anyway, I just wanted to say that, but I totally support.
Are you saying my numbers don't matter?
No.
It it depends.
I'm just teasing you, Kristina. I'm teasing you.
How many people are running in the district? It gets fairly complicated if you do it by districts. It was much easier when it was an at-large.
Congratulations that you didn't even have anybody who wanted to challenge you. Everybody knew you were the best.
That's right.
So anyway, I'm ready to vote.
Comment?
Absolutely. And that makes sense to me. I think that it gets dicey if we're reorienting our approach, but it's certainly a conversation that Bear is having, though presumably not so robustly tonight. But, you know, I think it's been a while. You were just mayor. And I feel very strongly, despite numbers, that, and I said it then, I'll say it now, Councilmember Beckmeyer, when then Mayor Beckmeyer was utterly robbed of the opportunity to sit in that chair, and
It was really the gavel I was robbed of.
You were robbed of the gavel. I think you were also robbed of being mayor pro tem in this chair. Were you not?
20, 20. Yeah.
Yeah. So I I feel like maybe a reset button is in order, and you have the experience of not merely being on a screen, but exploring the entirety of this space, which I would presume to be a slightly different experience. So that and, I don't know, a good idea is a good idea, no matter how you slice it.
Let's vote.
And the vote to select Mayor, sorry, Councilmember Beckmeyer as the mayor pro tem passes unanimously.
And I started out going out of order in the agenda and gave my speech ahead of time. So now, let's eat cake.
That was great. It's addictive, isn't it? Now's your opportunity. Now's the opportunity.
I didn't think about that, that you, your term was all very close.
I saw, I was reading something yesterday about how her gifts were
What were they doing?
They were.
They were.
They were.
I know, it was so sweet.
Some of them.
Do you want me to put them here?
I have to, like.